Call to order, the May 12th, 22 Avon Town Council meeting. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Julie, roll call, please.
Greg Zuzen.
Present.
Don Loudon.
Present.
Robert Pope.
Present.
Aaron Tivaball. Steve Eisenbarth.
Present.
Thank you, Julie. First item, a proclamation by the town for the Avon Schools Band Day.
All right, the Town of Avon, Indiana proclamation. Whereas in 2022, the Avon World Color Guard, Avon World Percussion Drum Line, and the Avon Indoor Winds topped their competitive fields by winning all three national titles in a single season. And whereas the Avon Bands have amassed well over 50 Indiana State Championships, along with the growing number of Bands of America and World Guard International Championships. Whereas the Avon Bands have shown continual success that requires a massive and continual team effort and collaboration from all involved. And whereas the Avon Bands perform to compete at the highest level available and strives to be the best in all they do while providing accountability and excellence for their performers. Whereas the Avon Bands gives every student a safe place to express their music through whatever ensemble they choose. And whereas the Avon Bands uses music to connect to the community, form bonds of friendship, and achieve a deeper foundation of what Avon, Indiana is. Now therefore, the Town Council of Avon does hereby proclaim, May 16th, 2022, Avon Schools Band Day. In the Town of Avon, and we urge all citizens to honor this day in recognition of all the students, the teachers, directors, musicians, and staff, to wear black and gold, the official Avon Schools colors. And furthermore, we urge all citizens to take a moment in your day to stop and listen to songs that bring you joy. Proclaim this 12th day of May in the year 2022 by the Town Council of Avon, Indiana.
We're going to take a short five-minute recess to take some pictures with these young, fine people. Call and meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda to include a check register and approval minutes.
I have no comments. Greg, you got anything by chance?
I'll make a motion that we accept as presented.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Julie, would you mind taking a roll call, please?
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment opportunities. You may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we will close that section of public comment, move on to department updates. Who's going first? Bill, you're the one closest to the microphone.
All right, so the VCA is relatively light, one item on the agenda. It's a continued item from the last agenda. And we don't have anything scheduled for the June agenda yet, but the filing deadline's still up, I think, next week. Having said that, now the Plan Commission is a totally different story. So the May items on the agenda, there's about seven items on that agenda, and three of them are relatively controversial. But then there's always that surprise that happens where the one I think that isn't controversial turns out to be controversial. And then the June agenda has about six or seven cases on it. And about three of those have the potential of being fairly controversial. From the standpoint of administration, we're back to scanning. We've got planning files scanned through 2004, but we sort of paused the scanning process and returned to the beginning because we had a lot of large format scans that we hadn't scanned. And so we're going back to 1995, 96, and taking all the large format scans out of those records and getting them placed in the records. We, so far, we've scanned about 520 cases and then put them into our iWorks system so they'd be, they would be searchable. And Daniel has started scanning the enforcement file, so he's got about a box and a half of 10 boxes of old enforcement records scanned. And once he gets those scanned, then he's going to go back and input those into iWorks as well. So we should have a complete record of the planning and zoning records going all the way back to the beginning of the city. That's all I have. If you don't have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions in the chat.
Thanks, Bill. Steve, beat you to it, Jared.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director, County 100 South Reconstruction. They're lime drying on the north side of the road right now, placing soil behind curbs, installing fill for the path. They saw cut out on Ronald Reagan for that modification. They've installed some of the limestone wall at the All Points Roundabout. And the temporary paving is scheduled for this coming Monday on the 16th. So then we'll be able to move traffic a little bit and get some more work done. Dan Jones Road Widening Phases One and Two, the right-of-way is substantially complete. There are still several in process, but it's in pretty good shape. Stormwater Utility, the quarry bill just went out recently. All of our staff, including our newest addition, are trained with our customer service software and are handling all the customer service calls, and I think we're pretty satisfied with what's going on there. MS4, again, our newest addition, Drew, he's doing our inspections. He's looking at all the active land disturbing projects, and he's doing a really good job. I'm really happy with him. Glad we got him on board. He's also helping Keaton when we need two people doing other things, like when we're replacing traffic signs. I don't like keeping him out there by himself. Sometimes he still does when he's off the right-of-way or in the right-of-way off the road enough, but I like the two of them to be out there together. And so having that second guy really helps. Roadside mowing and trash pickup continues to go. We had a community cleanup a couple of weeks ago, and that went up really well. Street sweeping, we're getting ready for a full sweeping fairly soon, negotiating that right now. Pothole patching, it's ongoing. We got a complaint today at like 4:45, and by 5:15, Keaton had it patched, you know. So we're trying to be pretty responsive on that. We also have a big comprehensive patching where we can, because Keaton's using cold patch, you know. We have Grady Brothers doing some hot patch for us and actually doing some pretty big patching. And so they're supposed to start any day now, just trying to fit it in their schedule. Traffic sign replacement, it is ongoing. We're doing all the regulatory signs as they come up, and then all the other ones as we get time. Staff training, we're doing some little things as we go along right now. We are starting The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People by Stephen Covey, and I hope I learned something from it. But one of these days, I'm going to be effective. So we're working on that a little bit at a time, and then Drew and Betsy are getting their MS4 certification soon. Keaton is continuing on, he's completed two of the NDOT inspection certifications, has four more. I think he's reached out to Steve, our local expert on those NDOT certifications, to finish those up. And then I guess, the only other thing is, I guess on the agenda is the community crossing thing. Yeah, so I guess there's some question as to what we're going to do with the money. We submitted projects to get the money, and the projects we submitted were Ronald Reagan from 36 and North to our immediate limit area. I think everybody can recognize how much that needs work. We'll be doing some under drains to stabilize the subgrade, and then we'll be doing basically a full-depth repaving of that, trying to fix up those big ruts that we have there. Then resurfacing that whole stretch. Monterey Circle, we're going to do some full-depth patching and then surface from Foxtail to Austrian Way. Avon Ave, we're going to go from Woodland to Governor's Row. Bluewood, we're doing the whole thing up in the settlement, down in the settlement. Maple Drive, we're doing from Avon Ave to Avon Parkway. Gold Coin, we're doing from Foxtail to Austrian. So that's $2 million worth of work there. So now it's not counting some of the other work we're going to do. We're going to actually have another smaller asphalt project, doing some work in the lots here and some trails, trying to get those done before July 4th, make them handicap accessible. And then we're doing some small things here and there. There is a, the Murphy Park, they have a new crossing there on 625, and they have a stub to the future trail. And then we're going to go ahead and put a pipe in and stone it to the grass trail that gets you then to the white lipped trail. So that's all happening too. Questions?
Just one, when it's great, all the repairs, as you're doing the ones for the ADA compliance, you know, that come in there, let's make sure we get them in. Are we still using the binder process that we do that? You know, you have your ADA program, Brian, that you've had. I'd say just make sure that we get those entered in so we get credit for those and they get it accounted for.
Yeah, Ryan delegated the ADA coordinator job to me.
Oh, that's great.
And I actually, I've designed a lot of ADA programs for a lot of communities throughout the state, so it kind of falls under what I do, so I'll handle it.
No, it's great.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Good evening. Let's see, we've got a meeting scheduled between Chicago Industrial and Shears Group to talk about access to the Shears property on 200 North, where they want to build a 300,000 square foot building. Information's going out to Chicago Industrial on the timeline for the bonds on 100 South. Shears Group is looking for more property to develop, and we can't find any, can we? They'd like to develop some more property up and down Reagan, but we can't find anything for sale right now. If you haven't been up and down Reagan on the south side, DRG, who's building the 300,000 square foot building, you'll notice a 791,000 square foot building that's got about half the panels now standing. So you can go out and watch them actually raise the panels up. Rise Development is, we're kind of still waiting for the client to meet the standards so we can get the project approved, move it forward. Avon Landing Apartments, I was told this morning that they should be moving dirt, so I'm going to drive past there on the way home tonight to see if they are. And Avon Landing Industrial closed on their bonds last week. So I think we'll start to see some dirt being moved up there in June. Any questions? It's all yours.
Jared Wade, Communications Director. Just a few things of note. First, next month, our CGI video program is going to start recording out around the town. This is going to be happening in about three days. It's just a lot of video recording. Some of you are going to be in the videos, some of you are going to be in the video. You don't know that yet, surprised. I'm telling you this now. May 20, or May 2, May 2022, that's what I'm trying to say, our most recent e-newsletter went out, and it's got some good stuff in there. If you're watching from home right now, you can always tune in or look at the new e-newsletter and get all kinds of really good information. So I would encourage you to subscribe to that and check it out. On June 1st, we start the application or the promotion process for the Greater Avon Citizens Academy. June 15th is when the applications will be opened. This is a joint venture that the town and the township are working on together. Karen is working with me, and it's going to be an eight-month-long, really cool, in-depth course on how the governments work together, what we do, what's unique, really kind of boils down to the money. Where how does the money used in the town, how is it used in the township, how is everything processed? So everybody, Julie's going to be teaching a class, Ryan's teaching a class, Mitchell's going to teach a class, right? Yeah, sure, thumbs up. That's a legal thing, right? Okay, good, you're on board. The new website is going, and there's really, really good feedback from the community. We appreciate that. Any feedback is good feedback. That allows me to make the changes that are needed, but there's some great, very positive comments that are being left and emails being sent. And then lastly, there's just some digital research that's being done for where we're at right now with some email and exchange servers and IT stuff that Ryan and I are working on. Just kind of figuring out, moving forward, what's the best process for the town as we continue to grow and evolve and make some good changes. So very high-level type stuff right here. I know that we're going to be speaking again here in just a moment, but I wanted to give you some tidbits and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jared.
Good evening, Sean Stoops, Chief of Police. First thing I'd like to talk about is this last Saturday, we had the beginning of our 2022 hiring process for police officer candidates. We had 285 pre-applications online. 65 individuals actually showed up to take the physical agility test on Tuesday, or I'm sorry, on Saturday. Immediately following the physical agility test, 52 people passed that and went to our written exam. 51 of those 52 actually showed up to take the written exam. And of the 51 that took the written test, 37 will now move to the structured oral interview phase, which begins next week, which will take place over three days. Just a little, some side notes on this hiring process. In September of last year, we only had 34 people show up for the physical agility test, so we have nearly twice as many show up, so that's promising. And we also have six Indiana Law Enforcement Academy certified individuals that's in this process still right now. And just to put this kind of in comparison, there was another agency just on the north side of the city of Indianapolis that also conducted a hiring process, and they only had six candidates show up for their process. So we want to thank Jared for helping us with the marketing and getting that information out on our social media pages and stuff like that, because I think that really resonated and hit a lot of people out there that we might have missed in the past. So thank you, Jared, for what you do.
Can I interrupt you, Chief?
Yes, sir.
What's your timeline? You've got 72, 75% of these people have made it to the next step. How fast can we get them to the finish line so they don't, you know, there's other agencies out there, like you said, that are looking? So we don't lose those opportunities.
Well, like we've talked about in the past, we've worked over the years to streamline our hiring process, and that includes everything from the background investigation phase to the structured oral interview phase, as well as working with the Testing Institute so that we get these results in a timely manner. We don't leave any days to the wayside where we don't do something to get this hiring process done. So our anticipation is, once we get these, the structured oral interview scores to the Testing Institute, they'll be able to provide us with the cumulative scores, and then we can have a merit board meeting as soon as probably the end of May or the beginning of June, and they'll be able to certify that hiring list so that we can begin our background investigations. And as soon as those are completed, we can tender conditional offers of employment. If any of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy individuals are tender to conditional offer of employment, they will not have to go to the academy, they will not have to go to the psych and the medical evaluation because they're already in perf, if they're from an agency that's in perf. And then they can immediately, in process here with our agency, and begin an abbreviated, most likely an abbreviated FTO program, and be out on the road probably as early as the end of summer and definitely by the beginning of the fall.
And how many positions are we looking to fill?
We currently have five, potentially six. We have two vacancies that were new spots. We had two individuals that retired earlier this year. We now have an individual, which I was going to talk about next. Officer Stephanie Ingram has tendered her resignation. She's going to go back and pursue a career in paramedics field and medic field and nursing. So that was kind of her true passion. We just got her out there and got her working on her own. But she's going to be missed. We really enjoyed having her with our department, but she's going to pursue other career opportunities at this time.
Thank you.
Moving on, the Indiana Crime Guns Task Force, year-to-date, they've seized 98 firearms, made 127 state arrests, and made 10 federal cases. If you recall, this task force is a joint task force for Indianapolis and metro area, which we're a part of. And some of those cases were directly involved in Hendricks County, and obviously, some of those were not. We don't really know what we might have prevented, but those 98 guns taken off the streets, any one of those or more could have been used in our community that, through their efforts, were not. So we really appreciate their efforts and want to recognize them for that. Officer John Flowers just passed the Indiana Law Enforcement Firearms Instructor Course, and now we have another firearms instructor, which we desperately needed. We want to congratulate him and thank him for that. Our Investigations Unit just secured the third conviction on a 2019 armed robbery case. If you remember, our Avon CVS was robbed by some individuals for prescription medications. It was a gunpoint. It was a takeover-style robbery. The first two suspects, one took a plea bargain, one with the jury trial, both were convicted. The final suspect, which was the gunman, was going to have a jury trial this week, and right up to the jury trial, decided to take a plea bargain for 40 years in prison in lieu of going to a trial to avoid a potential harsher punishment if found guilty at trial. So we're really proud of our investigators, all the work that they did on that case. And preparation really kind of helped avoid that jury trial and secure a conviction with a pretty steep plea bargain. We also want to recognize Deputy Chief Brian Nugent. Earlier this week, he was awarded the Avon Rotary 2022 Citizen of the Year Award. And I'm not surprised, and anybody that knows him is probably not surprised either. So we want to congratulate him for his efforts in achieving that award. Our merit board will meet on Monday at 7:00 PM in the town court. We'd like to invite anyone to that meeting. It is a public meeting. This one's particularly special because we're going to recognize Merit Board Commissioner Frank Meyer for his 10 years of service to our merit commission. If you don't know Mr. Meyer, he's also one of the assistant principals at the Avon High School. He's going to be leaving Avon High School to, for, I believe, a principal position at another school, but it's going to be out of the Avon area, so he's not going to be able to serve on the merit commission any longer. And so we want to take that opportunity to recognize him for his service to the commission and wish him well. And we'd invite all of you to please join us when we do that. At that same meeting, we will be presenting to Avon some of our At that same meeting, we will be presenting to Avon, some of our Avon retired police officers, their service weapon of retirement badge and that's, it's a pretty moving moment and we'd like to, like to invite all of you to be there for that as well. We're going to recognize Officer Andrew Manick, Officer Tony Feig and Officer Greg Schuster, who retired within the last year. The reason for the delay was because the boxes, that the shadow boxes that the, that we put the weapon and the badge in and the plaque was on backorder. So we've been waiting for those to come in. So now they finally came in and we're going to catch up and get those finished. Our Citizens Police Academy had their class this week. I heard it was pretty boring. It's, it was the night where they go down to the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy and they get, they get to practice emergency vehicle operations, which is a fancy word for drive our police cars real fast around the racetrack at the academy. So I think a few of our staff, town staff are in that class. So I'll let them comment as to whether or not they enjoy themselves, but I think we have videos that show that they did. Our police, police station, the HVAC bids finally all came in. I did write a recommendation and submitted that to Mr. Cannon so that it can be submitted to the RDC for review and hopefully approval so that we can get all those HVAC issues that we've been having corrected once and for all. I'd also like to recognize that May is Law Enforcement Memorial Month and from May 11th through May 17th, we would ask everyone to please take a moment just to remember all of those police officers that have given the ultimate sacrifice for their communities and country, not just for this year, but for all of the years in the past. So that you'll probably see quite a few posts on social media about that and please, please join us in remembering all of those that, that we've lost through the years. In your packet, you should have a monthly report with a lot of calls for service data and highlights. I'm not going to go into all of those, but if you have any questions over any of that in the packet, I would be happy to answer those questions at this time.
See you then. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Before I go making a, put my foot in my mouth, I've got them all. We're not, we're not leaving out anybody, Jared. Julie wants to talk.
Julie Looker, Clark Treasure. I did talk to Miranda Bucy, our liaison with the DLGF today. We had a 45-minute Zoom meeting. We're starting all of our pre-budget stuff. So once we get our June numbers, we'll go in hot and heavy and have Ryan, myself and Greg Garitas, probably towards the end of June, first of July, we'll do our first pre-budget session with her and the DLGF. She did say that I need to look up, apparently there's a piece of legislation passed that she didn't have full knowledge of yet, but I'm going to look into. There's talk out there that we may not have to redo our CCD every year, which would be fantastic. So I'm going to look into that a little further and, and see where that is, but it's been presented, so.
Excellent.
That is my update.
Thanks, Julie. All right. Next item on the agenda, Council Comment Liaison Reports. Ms. Loudon?
Nothing to report.
Mr. TV Ball?
Met this week with Bill Westfall and Ryan and we toured the, I forgot the name of it. Yeah, and that is a phenomenal room. They've done a great job with, so excited to get him in here and to get all of that development going for our staff. Do you have any dates to report yet, Ryan?
So he hasn't verified that we can use it yet, but I do have dates with Bill, so we'll share those with our staff shortly.
Very good. Appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
Mr. Zuzen?
Congratulations to Dawn for winning the primary.
You too, Greg.
We're going for our psychiatric evaluation next month, but I met with Evan Bryant regarding the Cityscape project of last week. And then, as Sean said, I was at the Rotary event the other night and with the recognition of Brian Nugent as the Citizen of the Year from Rotary Club. So congratulations to Brian.
Mr. Eisenbauer?
Yeah, my wife came home and I apologize, I couldn't make it to the Rotary Dinner there, but she, she said, man, I wanted to tell you it was Brian. I knew it was going to be Brian. And I said, well, yeah, he's our leader in the community. You bet. So very appreciative for Brian and your staff there. As far as, I think Bill covered the, the Plan Commission things. I don't need to go into that in detail. And also our work session packet had everything from the Street Department. So we have all the numbers on that, so I don't need to go into that. Dawn's been kind enough to handle stormwater, so I, I've had a great break. I've just, I've just been enjoying it. It's been good. Another thing for Steve, I do have Earthworks binder in my, in my truck, if you need it, or HMA. So just get it tonight while it's hot, I guess. That's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. So we had a, you guys are familiar with that Hendricks County cybersecurity conversation. I thought it was, I went, attended, I thought it was very informative. The IOT, Indiana IOT, Department of IOT had introduced a bunch of new programs, made those available. They'll have some new grants that will be available soon, so will help shore up our cybersecurity liability. Our insurance provider will be real happy about that. I think it's going to be a great opportunity that we'll take advantage, I think we'll take advantage of. Attended that PD hiring process this last Saturday. It was a great day for it, fantastic weather for it. And one last thing, I met with the Executive Director of the County's Youth Assistance Program. We ended up speaking about the successes that they've had in Plainfield and about the potential process of setting up a similar program here in Avon. I believe there's not only room for it here, but, but, but a need right now purely step zero. So look for more information in the future. That is all I've got. Moving on, next item on the agenda, introduction zoning amendment ZA 22-06, 350 North County Road 900 East.
Bill? Petitioner?
You'll invite the petitioner up to share information with council.
Julie, I'm trying to put on, I'm having a hard time seeing.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm probably still getting old, too.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of council, my name is Brian Tuohy. I'm an attorney. My address is 50 South Meridian. I'm here with Tony Begado of Lennar. We're here on case number ZA 22-06. I'm sorry, I don't have a tie on. I haven't mastered the one-armed move yet, but I'm getting there. Thank you for your time and hearing this brief introduction on a beautiful summer night. So this is a request to rezone about 11 acres to the R4 district and it's on 900 East and Prairie Trail. It's actually kind of an unusual site. As you can see, it's just north of the Costco and just east of the YMCA and just west of 900. And as, and the other thing you can see, it's tucked in underneath a church there and it's sort of an L-shaped site, an L lane over on its side, and it's just south of Prairie Trail. So it's an infill site north on 900 East on the west side of the street. I believe it's zoned R2 now. And what Lennar proposes to do in the rezoning is to rezone it to R4 to allow for a multifamily townhome development of for-sale townhomes. And so this site, as I said, is surrounded on the south by Costco and on the west by the Hendricks Regional Health YMCA, on the east by single-family homes, on the north by church, by a church and single-family homes. It's owned by an entity called BAPS Indianapolis owner and it's about 11 acres. Our next slide shows a preliminary design of 109 townhomes. And those townhomes range in size from about 1,700 square feet to about 1,800 square feet. They would all be three bedrooms with two and a half baths. Now, could somebody customize one and maybe make it two bedrooms? I'm sure that could happen, but the idea is to have three bedroom, two and a half baths. And they will have, have a common area, a common, an association that will maintain common areas. The idea is to have the streets be private streets, but they'd be 24 feet wide and there'd be sidewalks on both sides of the street. Because that site is unusual and there's only one area of frontage on the 900, Mr. Begado and his team at Lennar went to Costco to see if they could figure out an agreement where they could get a second entrance. And they worked with Mr. Peoples and Ian and the fire folks here, the fire department folks here. And at least right now Costco has consented and we think we'll have a formal agreement with them to have an entrance, which as you can see is coming from the south there at the east end of the Costco parking lot. And the exact details that we don't have yet, it might involve a Knox box kind of situation for the, so that it's limited to an emergency access. We've made the entrance there at the, on 900, a wider entrance, but we realize that your ordinance and common sense dictates that you'd have two entrances and two exits into the site, especially for emergency access, but the site doesn't lend itself to that because again of its unusual configuration. The projected timeline of the development would be, we would hope to start sometime in the fall of 2023. And there, as I mentioned, there's 109 homes proposed on this site. What would they look like? Lennar is actually building in the Avon community now at a, at a development called Camden, which has been very well received. And these photographs are from the Camden development. And as I mentioned, all the homes would have two-car garages. They would be architecturally very similar to the Camden, these homes right here. They would, they think this is a terrific location for this lifestyle kind of home. You could walk to the YMCA, you could walk to Costco, church is right there. So they think that their target market, young folks just starting out or perhaps folks of my vintage that want to downsize, they think that they'll like to be right in that area, especially with that terrific access to the YMCA. The homes would, it's hard to tell what the homes will cost in this day and age, but right now they expect they would range in the mid to 50s, 250,000s up to around 300,000, depending on what happens to building prices. Here's another rendering of those. These would be individually deeded, so it's not a condominium, not that that's all that important, but I'd want you to know that. And unlike townhomes that have rear-loaded garages, these townhomes would actually have a, a small yard in the back of each townhome. So in summary, it's about an 11-acre site. There's 109 townhomes proposed. They're three bedrooms, two and a half baths, 1,700 to 1,800 square feet. The estimated prices will be somewhere in the mid to high 200,000s. And if all goes well, we'd expect building and construction to start in the summer or fall of 2023. And Lennar would be the builder and the developer of this site. We thank you for allowing us to give you a brief presentation and we'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for petitioner?
I do have a question. You've shown a lot of front elevation, but no side and rear elevations. Do you have those available for us?
I certainly will. I don't have them in my PowerPoint, but I'll get those. And I think we may have them on file with Bill Peoples, but if we don't, we'll get them.
The reason I ask is because when we're changing zoning, if we change zoning, then you need to meet our new UDO requirements.
Yes.
And that would require so much masonry and, you know, so many windows and things like that on the side. So that's, in my opinion, something that I would need before I could even
Okay.
Give consideration.
We, we certainly intend to meet or exceed your new UDO and, and we've been made aware of it. But certainly when we come back for a detailed presentation, we'll have that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Did you talk to Satori Point or the YMCA or the hospital to see if there was a way to get Egress-Ingress into the Satori Point development?
We have not. Our first stop was Costco to see if we could get another entrance.
Well, and the reason why I ask is I know Costco, if you look at the lot to the east there is undeveloped and I know that they're going to want to use the Egress-Ingress on the 900 for that development as well. So when you start to provide access to these 109 units through Costco and then you build that development there, that's just going to create more traffic as well, not knowing if it's possible or not to do that, but I'm just throwing that out there. And then my other question is, the homes in Prairie Trail, there's a new one being built right there. You can see it, but I don't remember the price point, but I think the price point was, was higher than the mid to high 200s. And I just was wondering about that. Any conversations with those homeowners?
We just sent out notice, I think, this week, so we certainly expect to hear from those folks, but we have not had any conversations with them yet. And, and certainly I agree with you, Mr. Zuzen, those, those homes are more expensive than this.
And then one other, did you say the roads are going to be private roads then within the development?
Our thought would be to have them be private roads and be maintained by the homeowners association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a follow-up on that one, Greg. The question for staff, on the private roads, do we have some other examples of private drives that have been maintained and maybe what has been our, the history of the quality of maintenance on a private level?
Yeah, we've, in, in the recent planning history, we've been more against private streets because I think we've had some maintenance issues. As some of you may have heard, a lot of those may be more on some of the commercial roads where it may be a multi-tenant center and then there's some arguments over who maintains kind of that frontage road. There are some good examples. Park Square Manor is one that, that they do maintain their own streets and they're private. They're in pretty good shape. Again, I think a lot of that depends on that they're built. So one of the things we did do when, when we redid our ordinance, we actually require, even if they're private streets, they still have to build them to our, to our town standard. Just making it a private street doesn't allow them to necessarily cut back on doing it. And so we've also found that by doing that, it's been less of an ask for people to have private streets because there's no cost savings, which was typically the reason people wanted to do private streets was to save money. But then it kind of came back on the town, was our streets are falling apart, nobody's maintaining them and so on and so forth. So we've put some measures in place to, to make that better for the community, but again, ultimately, streets are expensive to maintain and that's why typically cities and towns maintain streets because they can spread that cost around everybody instead of just the people in the small community, so.
That's kind of where I was going with that is, is how, how, how do you perceive being able to maintain that depreciating asset on a regular basis? Because it's very expensive to do.
You've got 109 units, but I'm not sure we're married to the idea of having a private street. It's kind of interesting. Some communities would want that because they don't want the burden of the street, but I understand and I'm not surprised that you have something in your UDO that says we, if we build a private street, it has to be built to your standards. But we can certainly look into making the street public.
Okay. And other question, too. Appreciate the way you, you brought in about the, the two-car garages in the front, allow the backyard. I think that's great for your tenants and to give a little green space back there. What, how can you keep garage doors closed? I guess, you know where I'm going. I'm just trying to think, is there any enforcement you, you can have to, to make sure that the garage doors are closed since they're all facing towards the road? But I do like the idea, you have a green space for the back. It helps the tenants.
And, and if I didn't make this clear, these would be for sale. These wouldn't be for rent.
Sorry. I don't mean to.
No problem. I just wanted to make sure that I, I might've said something that made you think that. I have seen some declarations that have the kind of language you're talking about in it, that if, if you're not, you know, taking a vehicle in or out, if you're not getting something in and out of the garage, garage doors have to, you know, remain closed. I don't know about the enforceability of it, but I've seen it in some declarations in different communities, and if that's important to the council, we can certainly look at that.
It, it is to me. I'm not sure how the rest of you feel on that, but I just want to make sure that if this would go forward, that would, there would be some enforcement of that. So that's all I have.
Let me add to the, the private road. I'm, I'm one of those that Ryan was mentioning, that's, I'm not a fan of that. We, we'll, we'll get the public ding on that on a, on a road not maintained, and I'm not sure we'll have leverage twenty years from now to enforce you maintaining that road. I, I'd prefer to see it a public road. I don't see any amenities mentioned for this, for this development. Is that intentional? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, we, we're kind of looking for some feedback, and we've been working with the staff and, and starting to talk about that. One of the things we thought about is that there's this terrific amenity right to our west, including that trail and YMCA, and so we wondered if maybe a clubhouse wasn't necessary with that kind of amenity right there. We do have some common area set out on the south side of the site that we'd probably put, you know, some kind of walking path around that detention pond, but if the, if the town is, has some suggestions, we're certainly open to that to create some amenities for the residents.
The last, last one I had was there, looks like there's a sub, an intentional stub road there on the southwest corner of your, your layout here. What's that about? There you go.
Hammerhead thing?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that the, the idea of that was maybe that'd be some extra parking for visitors, and we don't have, obviously, there's not going to be a stub going through the Costco building, so that was the idea, just to have an extra area for parking.
Any further questions for petitioner?
It just looks like the driveways are really short here, so without an extra public parking area, will they just be street parking then?
We, this, the driveways are twenty feet long and, and with two-car garages, so they'll certainly hold two vehicles. And the street, I think, was the, the, the former private street that we mentioned a minute ago, there's now a former private street after hearing these comments. It, it will be whatever the Avon's ordinance requires, and we'll have to, if, if there's enough room there, then we'll have street parking.
Any comments, further questions? I'm seeing no, so, thank you. Thank you for your time. We'll consider zoning amendment twenty-two oh six is introduced. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Next item on the agenda, accept annexation petition for the Velazquez annexation. Ryan, you're handling this?
Yeah, I'll handle it. This is the typical process. If, if the town is presented with voluntary annexation petitions, the first step in the process is for the town council to accept those, and the staff will develop timelines and, and get them moving in that process. Both of these are, will be super voluntary annexations, meaning a hundred percent of the property owners are interested in being annexed in this area, and so they're here for you guys to accept. One is on County Road two hundred north, and one is on County Road nine hundred east. I'm happy to answer your questions.
The green area is around, if that's all the town of Avon?
That's correct, yeah. So in, in your maps, the green is showing our existing town boundaries.
And this is that home that has been under construction for probably a year and a half, or so correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, it's a, a new custom home that was just built, and you can see it's kind of right next to our bicentennial trail that we recently constructed.
Are there any, because that's kind of on an island, is there any drainage issues that are, that we're aware of?
Um, I don't know, I may defer to Steve. I know this was one, we're not exactly sure, this property owner approached us, we didn't approach him, so I know Steve did some drainage work along the back, so I don't know if maybe that contributed to maybe why he's asking to be annexed, because we may have done some of that drainage work, and he may have some issues too, I'm not sure. Steve, do you know?
I have a thought personally, I just took care of the issue and moved on.
Okay.
So with.
Maybe, maybe not.
With this property being in the county, I'm assuming they've reserved or allocated funds for drainage? That if they're annexed into the town, we would get that allotment that's been reserved?
Correct, yeah. If it's a, if it is a legal drain, and there's money in that legal drain fund, our agreement with the county when we created our stormwater utility was, any money in that fund that was earmarked for that drainage would be given to the town. We'd have to do some investigation to see if, if they are actually a legal drain, if they're paying a drainage fee assessment or not.
I think that would be important to know. I mean, I'm not looking for the golden egg here, but at least if we find out later on down the road that there is a potential drainage issue, we know that we've got some funds coming from the county's portfolio that we can offset it a little bit, so.
Uh, I think part of the question Greg's asking is, is there any liability, any, any unknown or unseen liability that we should be considering annexing this?
No, I don't think so. I mean, e- even if he is annexed and he has a drainage problem, just like every other resident in the town, he starts paying a stormwater utility fee, just like everybody else, so even if he does have a drainage repair that has to be done, he'd eventually pay that back, and, and that's why we created a utility to make sure we're, we're repairing those and that we're being responsive to drainage issues. So I, I don't see an issue with that. I think it's still better served to be in the town of Avon. He's, this whole area is, as you can see from the green, and he's basically surrounded by Avon anyway, so I think that's probably part of his acceptance, that he's surrounded, at least he, he can vote and have some say in what happens.
Forgive me, there's also, I, I apologize, I stopped at just the Velazquez annexation, there's also the Patel annexation, which is the next page down, forgive me.
That's correct, yeah, there is Patel annexation as well, same situation, it's an individual property. This one, we have recently done an annexation of the area surrounding it, and so we're just adding this piece to the existing annexation, and he was the owner of the previous property, and so we're just adding this one in as well.
Same, same question there. Any li- any unknown liabilities, not, not just stormwater, any, any, any unknown or unseen liabilities that we might need to be concerned about?
Nope, not that we're aware of.
Any further questions for staff? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept the Velazquez inner annexation at eighty-seven fifty-nine East County Road two hundred north, as well as the Patel annexation as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a first and second. Julie, would you mind taking a roll call, please?
Steve Eisenberg?
Four.
Aaron Tivival?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, C Click Fix Community Plus Municipality Tool. I think you're going to speak to this one, Jared.
Evening once again, Council. Jared Wade, Communications Director for the town of Avon. C Click Fix is a community and municipality tool. We briefly talked about it during the work session. This is going to be a fantastic tool that not only the town can use from our end for organization and staying on top of those pesky potholes and things of that nature, but it's going to create a mapping solution for the community, so they can actually view and see projects that are being worked on, things that have been submitted, so that way they can be completely involved and allow us to be completely transparent with what's been submitted and with what's going on. There's a lot more that goes into it. You've already gotten that information in the packet, and we talked about it during the work session, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions about C Click Fix that you might have.
I think in that, in our work session, you talked about, we did not have this budget for 2022, is that correct?
That is correct.
So what is the game plan to, are, are we going to defer payment to 2023? And when we do the 2023 budget, we'll incorporate it at that time, or what were your thoughts?
Um, I, so both of these, neither of them were budgeted, and it's, or I think, I'll just address them to, as both as we talk about it. The C Click Fix, Steve and the Public Works Department see the value in it in terms of saving their time, and so Steve has said the cost for this year, he'll pay out of his Public Works budget. I don't know that he's identified a specific location, but it would probably be MVH, that's the main source of revenue that we use for that. For the Civic Ready that Jared will talk about in a minute, I'm proposing to pay for that out of my budget. We had some money in my budget for miscellaneous contractual and website stuff, and so we paid for the Civic Recs or the Civic Plus stuff out of, we can cover that money out of last year's budget, so there is some money in there, in my budget to, to do that, so we'll plan to play for the Civic Ready if the town council approves it out of the general fund, town manager budget.
Mitchell, I asked you at the work session, I want to make sure you've had a look, had a chance to look at the ca- the contract. Are we good, and what's it look like?
Correct, we reviewed both contracts for what Jared is presenting, and we find them satisfactory.
I've, I've got one more that kind of might involve you. So we've, we've kind of learned the hard way, we need to keep public record for comments on social media, et cetera, and here we're starting to create data. Is that a liability that we need to make sure there's a long data retention process, and is that included in this contractor's?
I can speak on behalf of what's retained, and I've confirmed that C Click Fix will retain all information that has been submitted. So John Doe submits a pothole request, and then there is a, basically there's a threaded conversation that happens after that's been submitted. C Click Fix retains all of that data information and keeps it on retention for as long as we're with them. If we were to ever decide to leave, we can download all of that information and keep it on hand for future use.
Does it satisfy liability?
Correct, and their retention that he just discussed in the contract is in perpetuity for as long as we are with them, and so we could pull that information at the termination of a contract and then maintain that under our public record system for as long as our code calls for it to be retained.
Excellent. Any further questions?
I've got a comment. In another presentation by the Public Works in our, in our packet, there is a Public Works spreadsheet with different fund balances, so within there, is that, can you identify where these funds are going to come from? It's in the truck presentation, he had attached a couple of spreadsheets, and I would suggest you do that in the future next time, especially if it's not even budgeted. It would help us understand where we're going to get it from, or what fund that you may have that we appropriated from the prior year.
Yeah, we can do that in the future. The one that's in the truck one, Greg, is only the CCD fund where we're paying the truck from, so it, it wouldn't be from any of those funds on that report that we provided, but I can, I can provide you an account line.
Can you just provide that as an attachment to this? So it's in the minutes in the future, if somebody asks or requests it, we have documentation to support that. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
I like the way this has code enforcement, ADA compliance, I mean, it, there's all kinds of things. It, there's a lot that can happen, it's like with any software, it's only if we really make use of it. So as I mentioned in the work session, I, that the, the key to me is that we actually give it the real gung-ho for this first year, and, and so that Steve's investment in the budget for the year one is, is taken and, and it's used and utilized well. So that's, don't mean to keep harping on it, but, but it's, when we invest money like this, it's great to say, okay, this is time for us to perform, let's make it work, not just showing potholes, but use it in every way we can. The geofencing and all these things are great to, to be able to work with this.
Yeah, the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, fifteen of you watching online, this is going to be for you. This is a really, going to be a great tool, so.
Yeah.
If, if it passes, if, if we get there, so. Uh, if there aren't any further comments or questions, I'm not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with C Click Fix. I, I think we're seeing both of these, right? Is that what we're doing here on this one?
No, we're just, this is just for C Click Fix for now.
Okay, just C Click Fix as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second, but I've got a question, do we, do we need to include purchase amount, just the fact that that's a contract, we're good?
You probably should insofar as what we know the final figures to be, and then also if you want Ryan or Jared to execute that contract, then also grant that individual the authority to execute that on your behalf.
I, I could amend that to, should I say the dollar amount, because I'm aware of it, of seven thousand dollars for the twelve-month period, having that proceed with the funds coming from the Public Works budget. Is that fair enough to say?
And this, this is an annual approval of a contract, right?
You're correct.
Even though it states year two is eight thousand dollars, we'll address it next.
Correct. Yeah, just an annual in the amount of seven thousand dollars, not to exceed.
Include in your motion to allow Ryan or Jared to execute, Ryan, I'm seeing points to Ryan, allow Ryan to execute the contract.
Also amend it to include the, the town manager, Ryan, to execute the contract. Second.
We've got a first and a second. Julie, take roll call, please.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Aaron Tivival?
Four.
Steve Eisenberg?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four. Jared, stay where you're at. Civic Ready, Emergency and Non-Emergency Notification Service.
Absolutely. So over the past month and a half to two months, there have been some rather large-scale emergencies that have happened here in Avon and surrounding areas. A few of those are notably the fire that happened on the Avon Plainfield border, recent crash on Raceway just a couple days ago, actually yesterday, I believe, and also there was sadly a school bus crash that happened with the Avon school system and a Plainfield student. These are all large-scale emergencies. Our website currently has a notification system where residents can subscribe to Parks and Rec notifications and to notifications that are a bit more generalistic, if you will, but there is nothing in the town, nor in the county, that is a, a true emergency notification system. And what I mean by that is a system that will send out information and notifications, be it text, email, or a phone call. It will literally call you and tell you on the phone what is going on. I think we are to the point now where we need to have something. We, we need to be able to contact the residents of Avon, we need to be able to contact anybody that wants to get those notifications, and Civic Plus has a service called Civic Ready that does just that. It does emergency notification, but it also does non-emergency notification, so we can use this with our Parks Department, with the police, with, you know, anybody and everybody in between. So this is another item that we talked about during the work session, but that is just a high-level view of what this emergency alert system will be able to do for us. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jared?
No, I think it would be a great addition and a good service for the community.
I've, I've got one for you. Who, who will receive these notifications?
So there is a mobile app that, and then it's also accessible from a desktop, so whoever we want to put on as administrators, if you will. Right now, the, the two or three individuals, maybe four individuals, that I can think of off the top of my head that would have emergency alert notification status would be myself, Police Chief Sean Stoops, Deputy Police Chief Brian Nugent, and then Town Manager Ryan Cannon, that would be able to send those emergency notifications. The smaller scale, non-emergency notifications, that would be a conversation that Ryan and I would have to figure out who needs to have those, those, those types of information, thinking out loud for Public Works notifications. It makes sense for possibly Steve Moore to have access to that, so that way he can update it as needed and be able to work with it, but it's very flexible with who is able to, to, to send out those notifications.
Opposite side of that, who's able to receive it? How does a person receive or be, be eligible to receive these notifications?
Sure, so all you.
Me, I want to make sure we're not finding a way to send out a blast to people who don't want to sign up for these things, that's where I'm trying to get to.
Got you. Just like the website is set up right now, you subscribe to the notifications that you wish to subscribe to. It is always in your control. If you want to not receive certain ones, that's okay. If you only want emergency notifications, you can just sign up for those emergency notifications. Who can sign up for them? If you live on planet Earth, you can subscribe.
That's a way to promote Avon. I like it.
Yep. There has been, I just had a text message conversation with our sales rep, and he said anybody, literally anybody. So if you live in Brownsburg, but you work in Avon, you can subscribe. If you live in Indianapolis, but you work in Danville, so you're going to be passing through Avon all the time, but you want to know what the heck is going on just in case there's an emergency, you can sign up. If you live in Michigan and you vacation in Florida, and you rarely ever come through Avon, but you're like, yeah, yeah, let's find out what's going on in Avon, you can still subscribe. So it just takes you jumping onto the website and saying, I want to be. the website and saying, I want to be notified of this.
Is Sycamore Creek in Planet Earth?
Sycamore Creek, is that in Planet Earth?
Yeah.
I don't know, is that, is that where you live? Okay, probably not then.
Thanks, any, any questions or comments for Jared, if not, entertain a motion.
And I will say that the amount is $6,000 for the first year, and then, just like before, I would request that Ryan be the individual that signs that contract, and the only reason that I'm, I'm saying that is he was the individual that signed our Civic Plus contract, so having the same person for our website, our Civic Engage website, having the same person do all of that, that's why I'm deferring to him to sign those.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Civic Ready Emergency and Non-Emergency Notification Service contract in the amount of $6,000 to be taken out of the Town Manager Budget, and that Ryan will have the authority to execute the contract.
I'll, I'll second that one, we've got a first and a second, any further discussion, Greg?
So again, this is a one-year contract, we don't have it budgeted for this year, it'll come out as something you've got, and then we'll work in the 6180 into next year's budget. My other question is on both of these, make certain we use them, I know that's what we're, we're, you know, signing them up for, but I don't want to buy something that we've set on a shelf, so.
And that's a, that's a plea, Robert, you just spoke to the community, I'm going to speak to the community right now, this is, this is going to be an element that's going to be a heavy marketing campaign to reach out to the community and say, we want to tell you about things that are happening good and things that are happening that aren't so good, but in order for us to do that, we need you to sign up, well, we live in Danville, that's okay, you, you're our neighbors, you can still sign up, and we can still get you those notifications, we live in Avon, great, we want to tell you about that, so it's going to be a heavy partnership, C Click Fix is going to be a bit heavier on our end to get it in the process, but I think the community is going to pick up on both of them, because they're both very, very heavily community oriented, and they're going to see the value of being able to have better transparent communication and, and engagement with us.
Well, not only transparency, but getting the real story from us, not from social media and, and five different contexts and interpretations of a question, you know, it's going to be up to you and, and the other people that have that access that we do get out there and we do provide that information, so that's the part that I like about it, it's going to be accurate, so.
And I like that, it's innovative in that we're, we will be the only community in the Hendricks County area that's even doing this, and I think that, you know, it's, it's a great way to lead, because I think it's going to be an asset.
Agreed, no further discussion, we have a, a motion and a second, Julie, would you mind taking a roll call, please?
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Steve Eisenbar.
Four.
Aaron Tivival.
Four.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared, next item on the agenda, local roads and bridges matching grant agreement, Steve, I take it you're speaking to that one?
Nope, I'll go ahead and handle it.
You got it, Ryan?
Steve, jump in if you have anything, but, so this is an agreement with NDOT, and so most of you may not be familiar with this language, but this is the legal language, local roads and bridges matching grant agreement, but it's the Community Crossing Matching Grant Fund is, is the program, you, you guys may be more familiar with the terminology, and Steve did a fantastic job and applied for funding, it's a 50/50 matching grant program, and so we were fortunate to receive $977,269.79, and so we will match that grant with another almost million dollars, and will, those funds will be put towards improving some of the worst roads in our community, and so I think Steve mentioned earlier what those roads were, it is in the agreement as well, in order to get those funds, we hit, this is kind of the beginning of the process for us to enter into that agreement with NDOT, and so we are asking for approval tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions.
My only question is, we've identified, I think, the projects that we'll put our money towards, is it possible that we can change that if something comes along that maybe may need a more immediate attention?
No, we cannot, the program, that's one of the bad sides of the program, is it's very stringent, what you apply for is what you have to use the money, you guys may recall a couple of years back, we did get the money and we didn't spend all of it, and so even if you don't spend all of it, you end, you have to give back whatever you don't spend, and so it's, it's very particular on what we can do, so we have our own local funds that we can use, so if we identify other things that are needed more, we'll use our own local funds to address those needs, and I think Steve.
Yeah, that's why I popped up, I was going to say the same thing, is that, you know, we have other funds available for the other things that pop up, so we, I think we're covered pretty well.
But what you just said then, so let's just say these, these projects that you've identified.
Hmm.
It only comes to $500,000, we don't have to give back $477,000, because they're only matching dollar for dollar, right?
So if we don't use half of what they've allotted, that's all we're going to get, and so we are, we're basically turning away the other half, we can't, we, we can't grow the project.
Right, so with these projects, you're very comfortable that we're going to either meet or exceed 977,000?
I'm hoping that we meet them and not exceed them, but yeah, that, that's, so we, we use the numbers that were inflated from an engineering firm, and because we, we're hoping that they haven't gone higher than what, what we've been given as far as unit prices, I'll give you an example, another engineering firm just told me the story yesterday that they used a guard rail company's numbers, and then bumped them up by 20% because they knew things were going up, they bid out the project, that guard rail company was a little bitter, and they were like 40% higher than the numbers that they gave them, so they were still 20% higher than their 20% buffer, so we, we can't, we can't begin to understand how these prices are coming out, but they're coming out really high right now, so we're probably going to run short of funds, we, we may have, have to cut something, because these numbers could be really high, we're hoping that they're not, but I don't, I don't see us having to turn back money, I, I don't see that at all.
And then Steve, I imagine you probably use the Pacer system or something to show your priorities of this?
Yeah, so this is all part of our asset management system, and so basically we rate the entire town, gosh, I think the last time, I think we're due in two years to re-rate everything.
Every public road?
Every public road, yes, we don't, we don't, anything that we maintain with public funds would be public roads, we don't maintain in front of the Walmart and, you know, places like that, those are private roads, but yeah, we, we rate all of our own roads, and then we come up with a, a plan to maintain those roads, and what we're trying to do is lower the annualized cost of maintaining each square yard of road in the whole town, and so we look at, you know, what it takes to do, if, if one's rated at a five, what is it going to take to fix that five, what's it going to do to keep the nine and, and, and eights, nines and eights, you know, so we do maintenance as well as we do repairs, and so this is all part of that, and so these have been identified as ones that need the major repairs in order, so that they don't get to the point where they have to be replaced.
Yeah, no, but my reason for asking, you answered it that way, is that, that you are prioritizing based on where the, where the need is immediately.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's.
Quantified through your evaluation of.
It's a pretty sterile process, yeah.
Good, no, no other questions?
Any further questions, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve local roads and bridges matching grant agreement, 62802 as presented.
I'll second, oh, Don's second first, I did the third.
We've got a first and a second, Julie, mind taking a roll call, please?
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Aaron Tivival.
Four.
Steve Eisenbar.
Four.
Next item on the agenda, authorization, authorization to purchase pickup truck, are you speaking to this one?
Nope, I'll go ahead and do it too.
Doing two, right.
Steve may jump in as well, same, we're going to, we'll take team it, we had the actual good fortune, we, we actually budgeted this year to purchase a truck, but Steve, through the Stormwater Utility, had actually planned to purchase a truck, which he placed an order in January for, and we all know kind of the situation, we're trying to get new equipment, and I, I guess to our fortune at this point, when Steve ordered that truck, they actually made two trucks instead of one, or they placed an order for two trucks instead of one, so when they got the second one, they reached out to Steve and said, hey, would you guys be interested in the second truck, and they agreed to give it to us at the same price that we paid for the other truck, and so we did, like I said, we had budgeted to, to get an additional truck this year in our budget, which was in the CCD fund, and I think I provided you guys that information, I showed in the budget plan where the funds were available, I also provided a copy of the budget that showed we planned to do that, I know it's slightly more, we budgeted $35,000, I think the cost of the truck is, I think, $36,150, I believe, if I recall correctly, and so we're pretty close, again, I know it's slightly over, but again, within the fund, that's why I provided the fund report that showed, within the fund, there's still plenty of resources to cover that additional $1,000 plus of cost, then I also provided, provided a copy of our fleet replacement plan, which is kind of what we follow in terms of replacing our vehicles, and so that kind of shows you all the, the vehicles in the town's fleet, and how old they are and when we plan to replace them, the quotes that I attached for the different vehicles were the quotes that Steve actually got back in January, and so there's nowhere else to even find trucks, so even those quotes that we got for the other ones, there's, if we went and attempted to buy those today, we probably couldn't even get those vehicles, so, again, I think this is, is a good deal for the town, and we were kind of fortunate that it worked out this way, and so we'd like approval to move forward and purchase this truck, happy to answer any questions.
The existing trucks that we do have now, are they crew cab?
Um, we have, some of them are crew cabs, some of them are not, it just depends on the use, like some of our planning trucks are just work trucks, these trucks that we're buying are actually, they have snowplow packages on them, and so we do want bigger trucks that have these snowplow packages, so we will probably shift some of our trucks around, so these two trucks will go to Public Works, and we'll probably shift one of the Public Works trucks over to our planning and building, that's, that's a work truck, if you guys recall, we added additional employee to our planning and building department, so they've actually been short a truck, and so that new truck will go to them, which is why we're not replacing a truck this year, we're actually keeping that truck in our fleet, we're just going to assign it to a different department, so no, all of our trucks are not this big, this is a bigger truck.
Any other questions for staff, if not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the purchase of a pickup truck for our Public Works Department, funds to come out of the CCD fund for an amount equal to $36,510, and Julie to make the payments.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, Julie, would you mind taking a roll call, please?
Steve Eisenbar.
Four.
Aaron Tivival.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Uh, next item on the agenda, Resolution 2022-04, Equipment for Retiring Officers, Ryan or Sean?
I'll go ahead and introduce it, and then if Sean wants to add anything, he can, in order to, just like we did at, at our last council meeting, if we have excess equipment, we have to declare it surplus, in this situation, the, the chief is asking for equipment for retiring officers to be determined as excess property, so that we can provide those, that equipment to the police officers, and so this is, you guys have done this resolution in the past for retiring officers, and so it's just a duplication of that effort, and if Sean has anything to add, he's welcome to come up.
That's what he talked about earlier, so I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-04, Equipment for Retiring Officers.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Julie, you mind taking a roll call, please?
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Aaron Tivival.
Four.
Steve Eisenbar.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Last item on the agenda, Introduction Ordinance 2022-14, Reestablishing the Recreation Impact Fee.
I'll just maybe do a real brief introduction, this is an introduction, I, I would maybe like a little feedback from you guys at the end on this, but as you guys are aware, we've actually, for the last 10 years, we've had an impact fee, every five years, we're actually required to update that, so we went under contract with layman and layman to go about that process, so we're now kind of getting to the end, which is where the council gets to see it, the council created a Recreation Impact Fee Committee who reviewed this and made a recommendation to the Town, Town Council, they, it also went to the store, or not the Stormwater Board, I apologize, the Parks Recreation Notification Council, they are recommending approval, it also goes to the Plan Commission, because it actually becomes an amendment to our comp plan, and so the May Plan Commission meeting, it'll be on their agenda for final approval as well, and then final reading to the Town Council at the end of May, we do need to get this approved before the end of June, we, we don't want any lapse of it, and so that's where we're, we're kind of getting through the process to be done by the end of May, our current fee is $1,095, and the recommendation for the new fee is $1,227, and so this recommendation is basically making its way to the Town Council, the one thing, I, I know there's, I guess I want to give you guys two things to think about, one, I didn't ask Chuck to come tonight, the council's typical rules for introductions is, we kind of just introduce it and then we move on, if the Town Council is interested in a big presentation about the Recreation Impact Fee, I can have Chuck attend the, the second meeting in May to do that, I, I know, I think most of you are familiar with it, or you've heard it before, so it's not all that exciting of a presentation, but if you guys are interested in it, I'm happy to have Chuck come, the second thing you'll notice if you look through the, the impact fee study, there was a consideration that he put in there, that if the council wanted to consider an escalator to the impact fee, some communities do that, not all of them do, the town's history has, we have not included that escalator, in particular, the first, when we did this, the first time, it was a new fee, so we didn't really know what we were getting into, and so we felt like, let's just get it in place and, and see how it works, five years ago when we did it, I think we kind of, we're still the same way, we kind of felt like maybe we weren't interested in doing that, the, the interesting part of the escalator is the fee, and I, I know I've, I've talked to a couple of you guys about this already, that in a five-year period, if you don't have that escalator, even the increase that happens over the five years, so for example, our $1,095 to $1,227, at even 3% for five years, our fee would be higher right now than the $1,227, so, and it's certainly with, where we're at in the world with inflation at this point, by the time we even adopt that $1,227, it's already going to be less than it probably could be based on our purchasing power, so if that's something the council wants to do, we do need to amend that and put that into the ordinance when you guys adopt it, so, again, I don't, you don't, you don't have to give me feedback on those two things, but between now and the next meeting, if those are things you guys are interested in, please, please let me know.
Well, I think by using that example, though, our $1,095 is what it was five years ago, and it stayed that way, at least with an escalator, it's ramping up a little bit, which to me is fine, then when you get to your end of your five-year contract and you determine wherever that escalator ended up, that you want to even raise it higher than that, you can still do that, so you actually have earned more revenue along the way versus not doing an escalator at all, so I would say certainly suggest the escalator, but the other question I have is, does he have a comparison of where we fit in the different communities that he does this with, because I believe you indicated to me, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, and we have to have a basis for why we're trying to do this, so I think that would assist us as well.
Yeah, there should be a copy of that in his presentation.
There's a table.
That showed all the different communities, now I will say, recall that we establish a level of service, and then we identify amenities, and that's what brings about the recommendation for the fee, and we have to follow that, we, we can't just say we want to be competitive with other communities, so we want our fee to be higher, you, you actually have to have the data to support the fee that you're doing, so just keep that in mind when, when you're looking at that, but there should be one in there, if it's not, I'll, I can get you a copy of it.
There's one on page 36, it shows us.
Yep, you got it. I got a couple of questions for you, Ryan, so, correct me if I'm wrong, what, what areas will this allow us to spin that riff most effectively, it looks like it'll be parkland, open spaces, trails, and playgrounds, is that my?
Um, I think we identified five priorities in this study, parkland, trails, shelters, playgrounds, and then the, those were the four that were in our previous plan, the one we added this year was pickleball courts, and so those five things, so that's, those five items is what adds up to the $1,227, and so when we receive the money, we can only use the money on those five items as well.
So do we need to expand that list, then?
Depends on our qualities of what we're wanting to do in our community, and I, I think that's great to, that's tied into something like that, that's tangible, and we know that this is, this is what we want to perform and do that.
You can add as many items as you want, but, so if you look in the document, there's actually a cost benefit analysis, so if you recall, the way the rec impact fee works is, you establish a. So if you recall, the way the rec impact fee works is you establish a level of service. If you're short of that, that's what we call a deficiency. So the town has to use our own resources to eliminate the deficiency. Now then, we get to capture the revenue of what we need for future growth out of this other pot. So the other items that we would pick would actually require the town to make a higher investment to get a smaller amount of revenue. And so we picked the items that was the best return on our investment. So that was, those five items had the best return on our investment of, if we are spending a dollar to eliminate a deficiency, we're getting back more than a dollar in revenue. On some of the other ones, we may have to spend $500 to get $1 in park impact fee. And so we said, that doesn't make sense. We don't want to commit ourselves to spending $500 to just get a single dollar. And so Greg, you may look at that. There's a spreadsheet in there that shows, by each item, it kind of breaks that down. And that's, the impact fee review committee went through those and kind of made those determinations of what we felt were in the best interest of the community and the best cost benefit analysis.
Correct me if I'm wrong too, Ryan. If we identify something in the next year or two or next five, we identify pickleball courts, something new that we've identified, we have a deficiency, we have a need, there's nothing stopping us from spending that $500, as Ryan was saying, getting us up to a level of service. And the next time we adjust this, putting that as the-
A priority.
Mark, the priority. The priority. And then we can add that RIF fee to spend to maintain that level of service in the future.
Isn't there a requirement as well that we have to spend these dollars or a percentage of these dollars in a certain period of time? Didn't we use some of this money to buy the summer lot property?
Yes, yeah, actually, almost-
Didn't we have to spend something?
Yeah, actually, if you go look at that cost benefit analysis, you'll actually see that the two that bring us the most revenue on the fee side is land, which we actually showed a surplus. So that means we actually have no deficiency of land. So every dollar we collect is for a future need, which means we're paying nothing, but we're able to use that money to go buy more land. And so that one was the best. The second best was our trails and sidewalks. And so we are using our trail and sidewalk monies to build some of our trail and sidewalk connections that we're doing throughout the community. For example, the new trail built on County Road 900 that we partnered with the county. The county's doing the drainage project and we paid for the trail. That trail, we're gonna pay our share of that out of our Recreation Impact Fee. That was the second one. And we're spending very few dollars to be able to collect a lot of dollars. And so those two, we're able to go and spend that money and use the RIF. Now, for example, if there's a deficiency, before we can spend that money, we have to eliminate the deficiency with our own money first. So for example, the pickleball courts, we don't have any pickleball courts right now. So we're gonna have to spend some of our own money to eliminate that deficiency before we can use Recreation Impact Fee money. So we'll have to make an investment now. I think our thought was that we have a deficiency of two pickleball courts. So if we pay for two pickleball courts, we can build six and four of them can be paid for for future need. Does that make sense? And when I say we have to pay for it, it means we have to pay for it from a source of revenue other than the impact fee.
Can we use these dollars? We have three parks, I guess, or land purchases that have no amenities to them. Can we use these funds for those amenities?
Yes.
Playground shelters.
Land, playground, shelters. And that's, if you recall, I know it's been a couple of years since we talked about the development of the parks, but as we get into the budget process this year, we'll talk about it again. And we talked about doing a bond to develop those parks. But the bond was gonna be a combination of bond from our own resources to pay for some of the amenities. But then we were gonna supplement with impact fee revenue as well to build some of the playgrounds and the shelters, trails and those things. And so those things we can use to develop inside of our park.
I love the idea of trail connections, you know, that we could use it for that. And I think when the General Assembly did this in '91, that was great that they had this for infrastructure. So that's great.
I got one more for you, Ryan. And it mentions a proposed policy for credit considerations. Do we have that? Do we have a proposal for that? Do we have something in the works for credits to this Recreation Impact Fee for any developments coming to town?
Yeah, I think we've already gotten established policy. I think it's only, it's maybe only happened, well, twice maybe. I think part of, when we got the Wynton Meadows Park, the 20 acres we got there, we gave someone a credit for that. It's really a decision that we make as a town and as staff that ultimately comes to the town council to make that decision. If somebody wants to appeal, there's a different process. If they don't like our determination that we make as the town council and the staff, they can appeal and there's a Recreation Impact Board that reviews that appeal and we have that in place as well. So it's normally a positive working relationship. I don't, we've never had an actual appeal that's gone to the board. We did have one that was close, but we ended up working it out.
I have a last, one more question. So there's some old tennis courts that we've had conversation about converting that we don't own into pickleball courts. If we were to do that, can we use these funds to do that? Or is this where we have to put in our own money first to then get formal, or your example?
Yeah, I think that was actually one of the discussions that the board had was if we did that. So I think the thought would be that, yes, that is, we could use that. We'll probably have to match it with our money. So for example, it goes to what that actual equation works out to be. So if the deficiency is two, we'd have to, and then the cost of two pickleball courts is $50,000 apiece, we could use $100,000 of food and beverage. But if we build six, we could use $200,000 from RIF. So it's a $300,000 project to build six courts. It's just how our source of revenue goes. Does that make sense, Greg?
Yep.
Okay.
And my last comment is, I'm not really concerned that this figure of $1,027 is out of line. And I'm only comparing numbers to numbers. I don't know how they came up with the number. But if you look at Brownsburg, is it $1,191? Danville's $1,117? And Plainfield's $1,289? And to me, this is no different than every year we go through the budget process and we decide to raise somebody to a certain level and we get out of the gate first. And by the time another community gets to their process, they've gone from the median to the higher end, so we're still low end. So I'm not really concerned that our number is too aggressive. So maybe take another look at it too by the time we approve this. And does this go into effect? Is there a deadline that we have to do this by? So with that comment being made, if it's the end of the year and we're six, seven months from that point, I think, you know, your number might still be going higher to get to that year-end starting point. So I just don't want to leave any money on the table because we have a tendency, we don't review our revenue on an annual basis like we review our expenses on an annual basis. And if we don't do it for five years, now with this as an escalator, it'll be five years before we look again. So we're leaving money on the table.
That's correct. And the statute says that once you pass it, it can't go into effect for six months. So there's a grace period there. That's why we're doing this now because the current impact fee is set to expire in January of '23. So once that six-month period rolls off from this meeting, your new impact fee will go around and then it's valid for five years. So we're kind of hamstrung a little bit from reassessing it closer than a year because we still have to wait six months. We don't want a gap because then a developer could slide in when there's no impact fee at all and not have to pay into that fund.
Thank you. Yeah, we're not required to wait five years. If we had a lot of park development in the next three years, we could choose to say we want to spend the money to do another evaluation in three years if we want. That's at our discretion.
Which we are able to use impact fee funds.
Yeah, and we use impact fee funds to actually pay to do the impact fee studies, so.
Do you need any confirmation from us about the escalator? It sounds like we're in agreement with that.
Yeah, I think if that's what the council likes, that idea of having the escalator, we do need to put it in the ordinance. So if we know tonight, when we bring it back for the final reading, we can add that.
I'd be for it.
Does it cause any problems if we have a balance in that fee fund and we don't use it for X amount of time? In other words, we're charging too much, we've taken too many funds and we don't end up, what's the penalty? What's the problem with that side?
There's no penalty. And so the people we're accountable to for this is the people who are paying the fee. So typically developers or home builders. So the people who are paying this is anyone who pulls a new building permit. I will tell you that while we have a reasonable fund balance in that fee, we're spending a lot of our Recreation Impact Fee money. Like I think this year, we budgeted about $800,000. We're not bringing in $800,000 a year. So I think we've been able to document that we're spending the money that we're bringing in. And so as long as we're able to do that and that we're not just, we're not buying anything, but we just keep raising our fee but not spending any money, that's where it would become problematic. But again, I feel pretty confident over the next three years, I think with our parks developments we want to do and land purchases we've done, I think we'll be spending that money.
In the month-end reports I send you after we reconcile, you have updates every month on your expenses and your revenue for the rec impact in the 454. So just check on that tab at the bottom, 454, and you can see everything every month.
Well, and a 5% escalator basically is $62 the next year. And you add your 62, you're at $1,288 for a fee. I don't think that's out of line.
And we can show the assets of what we're doing with that money. I think that's the key.
I guess maybe, so Greg, if you're at 5%, I think Chuck recommended like a 3%. Chuck was, I think, recommended to be conservative, just so you don't draw the higher end of the RIF. But if Greg's idea of 5% is good with everybody, I guess that would be the other thing of, what is that escalator that everybody's comfortable with?
Right now, with inflation, I'm leaning to the higher number, but you know.
To you, 8.3, I think is what it was?
No, 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 no.
Because again, you have to think of it over a five-year period that it's, I know we have high inflation now, but I think again, that's why Chuck's suggestion was 3%. You know, yeah, we may run 8% this year, but next year we may run 1%. If we have a recession, we may have a negative percent, you know, who knows?
If I go down to 1% in one year, I can guarantee you that.
Sure. Well, at some point within your five years, that could happen.
I would support 3%.
I'd say we're at zero now.
We're at zero now.
Yeah.
It's a pretty hefty jump, 5% year over year.
Yeah.
But I am a fan of having something built in to sort of match.
Want to say three?